...session and to reopen the public meeting. Trustee Kay, second trustee Golio? Discussion, all in favor? Meeting will come to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a prayer by trustee Russillo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yesterday was, we observed Memorial Day, and at our local ceremony, the names of all the residents who had died in various wars was read and acknowledged. I'd like to take this time for us all to again acknowledge the sacrifice that those residents made on our behalf, as well as all service people throughout the whole world. Amen.
Thank you, Minnie, and good evening, everybody. Welcome to Village Hall. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, May 26, 2015. I think our agenda is pretty straightforward here this evening. We do have one presentation which we will get to after courtesy of the floor, and then we'll get to our matters requiring action, which again are pretty straightforward. I don't plan on taking any comments during any of those items. But we will start with courtesy of the floor. So is there anybody here who wishes to address the board on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not, or any concerns or ideas you might have? Yes, Patty?
Thank you much, Patty Steinschneider, Broadway-Dobbs Ferry. This Sunday, May 31st, we're going to have the fifth in our series, the final two, sustainable Dobbs. This Sunday, we'll be talking about buildings and land use, how we can shape our built environment from buildings to parks, parking lots to playgrounds, to ensure that we are creating a sustainable future. It's the last of our five meetings. What we've been doing in these sessions is through discussion with people who come, anybody can come and talk, we've been getting a sense of what the concerns within the community are. We've had transportation, we've talked about energy, we've talked about gardens and trees, we've talked about another one that I don't remember at the moment, oh, waste, you know, major cost factor in the Village of Dobbs Ferry. And these things, they've been very good. We've had, you know, good attendance, we've had good conversation. This last one, as I say, is buildings and land use, and the only thing I'm going to add to this is for the last five years, I think I've taken kind of a hit from people who criticized me for being involved in things, having been involved in the creation of the new code. I was a volunteer on a committee, I spoke my mind, other people spoke their minds, the village eventually, I had no vote, the village eventually adopted a code, which I think is an excellent code, they did a great job. The way you get to express your feelings is to go to these kinds of things. If I am there, I'm talking about what I believe it to be. If you're going to come to the Board of Trustees in another two years and complain about some law that came about because of the discussions that were held by, at these meetings, I think you should come to the meetings and talk then, because that's when the ideas are formulated, that's when the ideas can be talked through, and maybe some people understand it one way and you can shape it. So if you're involved, I think you have the right then to criticize anybody anytime you want. If you're not, I don't think you should come to the, you know, bother the board in two years. So that's my personal advertisement. I'm going to be here, I'm going to be talking. So if you don't want it to be just my voice, come to the meeting on Sunday and speak your mind. Thank you very much.
Can you just say where, when?
At the library, from 4:00 to 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Well said. Anybody else care to address the board? Okay, thanks very much for those comments. And before we go on further, I do want to welcome Kristen Wilson from Harris Beach, who's sitting in for Darius Shafazeta tonight. Kristen, good to see you.
Hi, Chris.
Thanks for being here. Okay, moving on. We'll get to our presentation now, which is a presentation by the developer for site plan on 430 Broadway, which is the mobile station. Just a little bit of background, I think this board has just recently been presented with a recommendation from the planning board. I know this proposal has been modified a bit from how it was presented some time ago, and you've gone back through the planning board stage, and it's coming back to us again. So we are seeing the new modified plan for the first time. And I'll just ask, once you get it kind of queued up there the way you like, that you state your name and address and who you are, just to kind of remind us a little bit, because it's been, it's been a while.
Certainly. Leo Napier with the Law Firm, Hafnus-Crowell &amp; Paulstein for the applicant, CPD New York Energy Corp. The site plan is to convert the existing mobile station, which currently has three repair bays, and take the existing structure, in essence, remove one of the repair bays, and convert the entire structure to a convenience mart. In addition, there is a proposed canopy to go up above the fuel pumps in their existing locations. Since this application was first before you, we were referred to the planning board, the plan went through a series of revisions before the planning board based on feedback and comments from the planning board, as well as the architectural, the AHRB. I'll highlight some of the major changes to the plans. There was a lot of different little technical notes and details that were added, some of which probably don't concern you much. But the major points that were changed were the onsite traffic circulation was...
Forward, back.
Okay. The onsite traffic circulation was changed to be counterclockwise around the structure. That was to avoid conflicting traffic patterns at the curb cut on Ashford Avenue. In addition, the cross connection to the diner property was relocated to the northwest corner of the property. That was also requested by Mazur in order to pull, it was previously located closer to Broadway. Mazur Consulting asked for it to be located further away to improve sightlines and take it away from where pedestrians may be accessing the property. In doing so, we also picked up an extra parking space, so there's now seven onsite parking spaces proposed, where five are required. One issue that was brought to our attention while before the planning board was that there's a 10-foot setback requirement, so as part of this site plan process with your board, we're requesting a waiver from that 10-foot setback requirement. There really is no other location to provide onsite parking that would comply with the setback requirements outside of immediately behind the existing structure, but the last go-around, when this plan was before you, over a year ago, that there was disfavor towards locating the property in that corridor there.
I already have a question.
Sure.
Can you show me how a car comes in and parks?
So they can come in off of Ashford here, they go behind the structure, and they pull into the parking there. Or if they're coming in off of Broadway, there's a parking space here and here, or they can circulate around the entire building and pull in...
Show where there are two parking spaces?
There's a parking space here, as well as a handicap parking space here.
Right, so the parking space is on top, the only way to go in is through Ashford Avenue?
It's either through Ashford or to circulate through the site.
You can come in off Broadway and go to the building.
We previously had the traffic flow going this way, but...
Understood.
We were asked to switch the circulation.
Okay, thanks.
In addition, we have added a no-left turn sign on Ashford Avenue going eastbound, so there will be no left turns. Left turns will be prohibited off of Ashford, that's to prevent any kind of traffic buildup trying to make a left into the site. The proposed pedestrian crosswalk was relocated, it used to run straight down onto Ashford Avenue, it's now been relocated to connect with the intersection at Ashford and Broadway. That was a request in that that's probably the most likely location that pedestrians will be coming from, and they'll cross there whether there's a crosswalk or not.
How come there's no sign there now for no left turns?
Couldn't answer that question. I mean, the site's been there for some time, I imagine it just wasn't requested the last...
No, I see people doing it.
Oh, yeah. There's no left turn. They do it, though.
They do it, though.
Coming out, there's no left turn.
They're going in.
This is going into the site.
They're going east.
So this will be a no-left turn sign facing this way on Ashford.
I've never seen anybody go in that way.
There's no left turns leading the site here, as well as on Broadway. Then there's no changes proposed to that.
Wow.
Take that.
I don't need to plan up for this. In addition, based on the comments from the village consultants, we've also added a note to the plan that there'll be no deliveries to the site from the peak hours of traffic during 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And we've relocated the propane storage and ice storage in accordance with some of the comments we received to the north side of the structure, so it's now facing the diner property instead of along Ashford Avenue. And in addition, we've added a note to the site plan that there's no drive-through proposed as part of this application, nor are we looking to install one. I think that covers all the major changes, if you guys have...
Yeah, I just want to point out also that I know it was requested that there were no exits onto Ashford Avenue from the site, and you said that, and that was going to be monitored, correct?
What was discussed was that the village building inspector, as well as the village traffic consultant, would monitor the site in the future, and if there were an issue, the applicant would consent to modifying that entrance to be one-way only if there were an issue that were prevalent.
Right. I just wanted to point that out.
And if we'd be willing to accept that as a condition of a resolution of approval.
That also is a condition, yeah.
Yes.
Because it's a tough turn now, coming out and making a right.
Yes, due to the proximity to the intersection, although we did have a traffic study done that was presented to the planning board, it was also submitted in your packages as well. Based on the findings of the traffic study, that there won't be any significant impact to the levels of service at any of the impacted intersections in the neighborhood here. So we believe it'll be kind of a self-governing situation, and if it's an issue, then we're willing to accept the condition that we'll come back and...
No, I'm just telling you, the turn now is hard to make.
Understood.
It's not just the turn, it's the traffic coming, the proximity of that turn to...
But you almost need two lanes to make the turn.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. And you cannot come out of that mobile station and make a right-hand turn and be in the right lane. It's physically impossible. You have to come, you can't get the car around enough. Am I the only one that drives?
No, I know who you're talking about.
Oh.
You can, but you gotta go...
You have to go swinging wide enough.
...and cut in, where cars are going to be coming in off Ashford.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And you've got to, you've got to remember that that fenced-in area with, I think he said propane and things, is going to be gone. It'll, it'll now be a no-parking loading zone, so you'll have a wider area to make that big swing, turn right.
Yeah, but those are also, you are having cars come off Ashford making a right onto there, so if you're saying...
It's going to be a challenge.
It's a challenge.
To that point, yes, so you can make a right-hand turn from Ashford into the, into the business, right?
Yes.
But if you do that, and you head to, and then you look for a parking space, you'll be at the, you'll be at the odd angle, right?
No, you have to...
No, you'll, if you're making a right in and off Ashford, you'll come up behind the structure.
Yeah, let's say you missed that. Let's say you missed that. You missed that alley.
The do-not-enter sign here?
You can't, okay, so you can't go, but that's all it'll be, it'll be a do-not-enter sign? But somebody who does that and commits themselves, in other words, is it possible to do that?
I, I can't help for driving habits. We've put as much signage as requested by the village in order to try to make everything work. There'll be arrows and a do-not-enter sign to try and steer the traffic flow this way.
So when you make the right, you're supposed to go behind the building?
Come on behind the structure and circle them.
Is it easy to get gas, or is it just to go park there?
Yeah, to get gas, yes.
Get gas, you're going.
Yes. You'll come around, and depending on what side your, your tank is on, you'll, you'll pull down to the pumps this way.
Right, and if we should, and if we make that no exit on that area, then you have to go around that building again to get it?
Yes, you would have to recirculate the site to get out.
You can't come in this way to get gas.
Which is one of the reasons why we're asking not to cut off that egress immediately, but instead to monitor the situation.
Yeah.
If it works, then great, and if not, then we'll be back before you.
Yeah, the egress issue is because of the proximity of that exit to the Broadway stoplight. That's where the issue is, because the backup of traffic could show us...
Correct, during peak hours, the, the traffic can queue up back to the curb cut, in which case you have people standing here waiting to, to exit the site.
Yeah. You may have already said this, but how, there's three bays that you're going to get, you're going to take care, take, remove two bays?
So the building currently, I don't know if you can see it on this plan, but it's slightly hatched, the existing building extends up to here.
Right.
In essence, I don't know if it's exactly one bay or one and a quarter, but they're pulling 720, 700 square feet? I think it's like 725 square feet of the existing structure out. The idea to do that was to free up the circulation around the back of the site, so that, in essence, we could send cars around and contain all of our traffic within the property. With that, we're still providing a cross-connection point to the diner property. On the last go-around, that wasn't possible, so you really couldn't circulate around the property without crossing onto a neighbor's property. Here, by removing the structure, we've opened all that up, as well as been able to provide some parking onsite.
But that back alleyway remains the same width?
Yes. The existing, the balance of the remaining structure is only going through interior changes. There's a little piece here which is going to be filled out to, to square off the building.
So it's all going to be retail in there? No longer will there be any...
No, no repair business.
No repair business. And can you tell how much square feet of commercial property there will be inside?
It's 2100 square feet.
2100 square feet?
Yes.
And what is it now for commercial?
It is 2100 plus, it's hard for me to read it, but I believe it's 700 and change. So it's roughly 2800 square feet now.
But that's including the bays.
Yes, that's including the bays. How much is devoted just to the convenience?
Yes.
Scott, do you know what that is?
Four thousand.
Maybe 500 or 600 square feet.
Okay.
So the convenience store stays?
Yes, the convenience store in essence grows.
It grows, because now it has Dunkin' Donuts or whatever the other...
Yes.
And there's two separate cashers, is this correct?
Yes, there'll be a convenience mart and then a coffee counter. There'll be no interior seating or dining within the premises, but yes.
And no parking variance, you meet all the parking requirements based on the...
Outside of the setback issue that I mentioned before, yes.
Okay. Do you have a rendition of what it looks like?
Sure. So these are the elevations. We did go to the AHRB. This is the existing building elevation and floor plan, so you can see there's three bays there, four bays, I guess even, and the convenience store here. And this is the proposed elevation. The AHRB did opine they would like it to look like, we're, we're open to finishing of the facade, they said it should look like a gas station with lots of glass and things of that nature, so that's the look we are going for. And that's really the elevations we have.
I know one of the things, last time when you were here, you know, the whole Dunkin' Donuts issue, I know you just said there's not going to be interior seating, that's not what's being planned, but is Dunkin' Donuts still on the table, or is it going to be just, you know, regular, you know, your Green Mountain type coffee, people come in and they're out?
It'll be a separate coffee counter, Dunkin' Donuts, as long as they're still interested. By the time we get through this process, it's certainly still possible to be a Dunkin' Donuts. There's really no distinguishment with respect to traffic and parking and this and that between local coffee shops or national branded retailers. But so long as we're disengaged, they're certainly still interested in the property.
I thought our traffic engineer last time was concerned that having a separate coffee counter, particularly with a brand name, was going to create a much larger, make it more of a destination, hence making it more car count.
The, the traffic study was done under the assumption that there will be 600 square feet of the interior space devoted to that coffee shop usage, and the traffic counts were done under that assumption. Mazur Consulting also reviewed those, that traffic study on behalf of the village and confirmed the results. So that was fully contemplated and analyzed.
Has this been before the traffic committee, Tom?
Not, not, this is not before the traffic committee, not, not this final new plan. We have a meeting tomorrow night, I'll bring the plans to that.
What did you say about was verified, the traffic studies?
I thought there was a discrepancy in the traffic numbers.
Yeah, because I'm looking at this, and this is a March 24th report, and it says these volumes should be verified, because they seem to have a question with the, with the volumes.
I do have Richard Pearson here from, from John Lyons Consulting, who could speak to the traffic issues, the study and his reports, I defer to him on that.
Good evening, Richard Pearson with JMC. I am a professional engineer and a certified professional traffic operations engineer. We did the traffic study and also addressed Mazur's comments. We actually used the volumes that Mazur originally used last, I think it was December, when they had a memorandum of the trip generation that, that could be expected with a Dunkin' Donuts type of use in that space. And there was just a question of, of our base counts versus their base counts of existing conditions. Ours were slightly lower, so we actually used higher differential traffic volumes than they used, and so that's what we explained in our response to those comments that you had referenced to, and their subsequent letter signed off on our trip generation, as well as other aspects of our study.
Okay, and do you know when that date of that was done?
I can just check.
Do we have? It's like the original ones were done on May 2nd, 2013.
March 24th is...
Right, because the March 24th, the report that we're looking at, it seems to indicate that the numbers were lower than what the studies were done for Rivertown Square, and there was a question of the veracity of those numbers.
Right, and then we did another study after that comment letter, and we did another count of the intersection, and the second count we did of the intersection was consistent with the previous count we did in association with this project. So both of those counts were showing lower volumes than what our office actually utilized for Rivertown Square. We did the Rivertown Square project, we also did the Walgreens application a few years ago, so we've been involved with the intersection for a while.
So that's in this packet somewhere?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any idea why it's gone down?
No, no.
I just, I really can't understand how those cars are going to go around this thing. I just, I don't, I mean, I understand how they can go around it, I just don't understand how they get in and out for Ashford Avenue. I just, can you explain that to me?
Our office was not directly involved with the site plan aspects of it, but I know that Phil Greeley of Mazur did, did spend a lot of time on that, and as, as Leo mentioned, the applicant did respond and revise the plan to address the Mazur comments.
It's just a very tough area.
I just, I, I, I'm, can you help me? I just can't, I can't visualize it, I just can't see it. I don't, I mean, if I'm driving now, how far do I have to go past Walgreens to make the right turn?
The curb cut...
No, the curb cut.
The curb cut is in essence not, not changing the existing curb cut on the property, so exactly where the driveway is now. There, there's some new curbing proposed down as you get closer to the intersection, which was in response to some of the comments from Mazur. But as far as where the, the curb cut starts, after you pass the Walgreens property, the Walgreens property, the Wal, the Walgreens property is right here.
Okay.
So in essence, you come down immediately after you pass the Walgreens property, you make a right-hand turn into the site, you would come up this way.
But the curb cut is not, is it really there now?
Yes.
It's there for the gas station.
In fact, I...
As far back as to Wal...
Somebody more familiar could correct me, but I think the majority of the curb is all curb cut for the most part along that block there.
You see people coming off of that.
Or it's drop curb, there's not much of a reveal there.
I think there's some discussion about fine-tuning that curb cut, too, a little bit.
So, so we have proposed, I mean, there's some planting proposed in this area here, there, there's some new curbing proposed along in here, which were in response to Mazur's comments, but in essence, the, the general location of it and the width of it is where you would generally access the site now. You would come up, you would circulate around here. There is this, as one of the board members noted, this is proposed to be a no-parking loading zone, so as far as your, your turning radius and how you can make that turn back out onto Ashford, you will have a little bit more swing room there. I think currently you see some cars do park in that area, so we're getting rid of that, those parking spaces.
I think the bigger benefit there is coming in.
Right, and having more room to make the turn to get behind the building with that extra area?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
You'll also be able to swing, kind of queue yourself up to make a sharper turn when you're leaving there by not having any cars there.
So essentially, all the traffic is counterclockwise? Even if you come into the, if you come in from the diners, parking lot, from Broadway, you come in and you still, there's the same traffic pattern, correct?
Yes. The reason for that is before, we had it being, coming this way, but that resulted in you had crisscrossing going on there, so Mazur Consulting didn't like that and said that you're better off to avoid that conflict, just send everything around the site counterclockwise.
And how much room, space is there between the Walgreens and the store?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, yeah, that's a reasonable space.
It's bigger than you think.
Yeah.
Truck's fit through that easily.
Really?
Yep. I, I just think still, you know, even with the redesign of the traffic pattern, you know, when cars are stacked on Ashford, somebody trying to get in, somebody trying to get out, you know, people coming in off Broadway, it's, it's a busy area, and this would be adding a lot more to already, I think, somewhat congested area. It's just, it's just a concern.
I think the problem is that if you're coming from the Sawmill down Ashford, and you turn right and go in, and you wanted to continue to come on downtown, you go all the way around, and then you have to make that right there to get back on Ashford, because that's the only way, because you can't turn left.
Well, you can make the right, you can make the right on Broadway and go down Maple Street, which is also going to increase traffic on Maple Street.
No, 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 no.
Right, but then you have to go all the way around to continue.
No, what he said...
You can't make a left.
You can't make a left, even going onto Broadway.
But that's my, my concern. You got in here.
Yeah.
You went all the way over here.
Yeah.
You parked, you had coffee.
Yeah.
You come out.
Yeah.
You're not going out this way. Now you're coming down here and turning back.
But you could go that way.
That's the only way you can.
Right.
Yep.
That's the problem.
To continue on towards downtown.
Right.
But that's the way it is now.
But that's the way it is now.
No, you can't make a left turn from this.
Right, you can't make a left at all from anywhere inside the mall.
You're right, you're right. That is the only way.
Yeah.
You can do it now, and that'll be the only way you'll do it.
Right, except it'll be...
And that's going to be the bottom line.
Right.
Okay, you've discussed this a lot. These traffic patterns, we could discuss for hours and hours. What you need, you, where are you with the ARB?
We did meet with the ARB. They had some comments on the proposed canopy, which we addressed. At the last meeting we had with the ARB, they basically just gave us the comments and said, "See you later." I wasn't under the impression we had to go back to the ARB. I did speak to Marcus coming into this meeting, he told me your board would look for approval from the ARB before moving forward, so I spoke to Ed, I'll get back on the agenda there, and we'll show them the revised plans and the finished product.
Yeah, I think you should do that. You know, I think that's one of the things that we're, that's important for us, is to maintain consistency here and make sure that we've got a full picture from both the planning board and the ARB.
No problem.
Whatever the issues are, whether there are recommendations for approval or whatever. So that, that I would recommend, because we are seeing this for the first time. I know it's kind of the second time around. I mean, obviously, you're hearing still some concerns about traffic flows, but I think you've had that discussion enough, and at the end of the day, we're going to have to make a decision about whether we're comfortable with those or not. What about the, and we all, and we do know that, not jumping ahead too far, but a waiver for the setback is going to be required...
Yes.
...from this board, so we're all clear on that. What about these, this documentation that's in the, that's the number-one point in terms of your agreement with the diner? Where does that stand?
So, so there is no agreement with the diner. As I explained to the planning board, we don't have, there is no existing easement or anything of that nature. We are providing a connection point up in the northwest corner there, and I, I can't control whether or not the diner property will give us an easement or not. What I did put forward before the planning board is that to the extent the diner property What I did put forward before the planning board is that to the extent the diner property at some point in time is looking to do work on their property and they're going through site plan approval, if they're looking to close that up, that would be before your board or the planning board and would be an action point for discussion. If the board would like some assurance that we won't close that up and that will remain an access point, I'm happy to do so. We can certainly approach the diner property, but again, I can't promise that I'll be able to deliver an easement agreement with the diner.
Okay.
I do think you have other controls that would protect that point from being closed up in the future through your site plan approval process.
Right, we'll speak to, we'll get a little bit more up to speed on that with our council and understand just how that might work.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant at all?
Okay, thanks very much. We'll see you back here when we see you back here, but I think the next step is the, is the finish up, what you need to finish up at the ARB.
Understood. Thank you all for the time.
Thanks very much, Leo. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, we don't have any public hearings tonight, matters requiring action. Action item number one is to consider a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Dobbs Ferry Historical Society to further a public-private partnership to advance the history of Dobbs Ferry and the Hudson Valley in the amount not to exceed $10,000. Just real quick background on this. This just sort of is solidifying the support that we've already been providing the Historical Society in terms of a budget to support as many of the activities there as we can on all of this limited budget. But to do it in a manner that is consistent with the, with the type of entity that the Historical Society is, which is a nonprofit 501(c), and to do that properly, the village attorney has looked at this and highly recommended that we have more of a formal-type agreement going forward on this. I think there's no question that this board particularly has been extremely supportive of the Historical Society. Wants to continue to be supportive going forward, and this is the right way to do it. So it just sort of tightens things up a bit from a legal standpoint and from a municipal law standpoint is what we're really doing here. Darius, I think, has sat down with Frank, I think he sat down with you and with Mary to kind of go through it. Unless you think there's any issues here, anything you want to address the board, I think we're probably ready to move this forward and take some action.
Again, Frank Farrington, president of the Dobbs Ferry, co-president of Dobbs Ferry Historical Society. I think maybe you said, well, I think former trustee Keningsburg initiated this idea, which was supported by the board, about helping to support the Dobbs Ferry Historical Society a few years back. And I think we're just formalizing this to keep that relationship working for the benefit of both entities. Before your vote, I'll just plug for some of our activities. Not as well, I got the floor for a minute anyway. But this summer, we'll have our annual, that's August 8th, Road to Freedom by Richard Borkauer. He's this big spearhead there. That'll be taking off of Blue Park in the afternoon, on a Sunday afternoon, ending at the Meat House with some activities for children and grownups alike. Recently, on April 26th, we had a fundraiser and also a presentation by Dr. Mayor Donovan on the waterfront, the history of the Dobbs Ferry waterfront. We felt that was current with the reopening of the waterfront in a few weeks. That went well. But also, I think, look further on the website. Mary, I think, is going to do another presentation, the same presentation at the library in the month of June, just to kind of re, get more people opportunity to see it. And again, things are ongoing with the, with that old house. We maintain the records, so archives in the building, keeping that building in shape is a great benefit to us and the village. And we have some drainage issues we're addressing, so we appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, fine. If not, I'll sit down for the vote. Thank you very much.
Questions for Frank?
Okay, great. Thanks, Frank. Okay. Okay, so let me take a motion then to approve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Dobbs Ferry Historical Society. And this again is to further the public-private partnership to advance the history of Dobbs Ferry and the Hudson Valley. And this will be an amount not to exceed $10,000 annually. Is there a motion? Trustee K., second. Trustee O'Donnell. Discussion. All in favor? And that passes with six eyes. And Frank, I want to thank you and Mary for all the work you did and what, all the members of the Historical Society. The programming has really seemed to step up a couple of notches. It's been great, but it seems to be getting even greater. And I want to encourage you to continue to reach out to the village. We've talked about some other ways that, separate from the village, that there could be some additional support for the Historical Society, and I very much want to support that too. So thanks for all the work you do.
Not only, I want to thank the mayor and the board, thank you again, but Ian, Ian Canet, mayor's son, did a great presentation on Alexander Hamilton. I think we're gonna see him again on August 8th. And it was a real, a real, I think the Meat House, we exceeded the fire code that night, but the building's still standing. But again, once again, thank you. And we're trying to stay current and we look for suggestions, but I thank you for your help. I thank you for your help, and we're looking forward to working together. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And let me see, incorrect, the vote was seven, to seven eyes for passage of that. So very strongly unanimous. Thanks, Frank. Thanks to the board for their support. Action item number two is to consider a motion to affirm approval of a request from the Alter Guild of Our Lady of Pompey Church to hang a banner at the Stop and Shop fence advertising a rummage sale that took place on May 23rd, 2015. So this is just some administrative housekeeping, I think, that we're keeping up on. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second. Trustee Rusillo, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Action item number three is to consider a motion to award the bid for the Summer Camp Bus. This will be to Royal Coach Lines for an amount of $17,529, as recommended by Recreation Superintendent Matt Arone. Don't think there's any questions on that. Matt gave us the letter on that as he normally does. This is something we do each year. So I'll take a motion to award the bid for the Summer Camp Bus. Trustee K., second. Then I'm looking down here for trustee Flynn. Discussion. All in favor? And that passed with seven eyes. I seem to be forgetting some of your names here today. Sorry.
I just want to say one thing. When I feel like for you, it is the hardest part of this job, so it's not just you. I do the same.
Don't take it personally. It's just, you know, sometimes you get a blank there and, all right. Action item four is to consider a motion to award the bid for the 2015 bulk, is that chlorine?
Yes.
Chlorine.
Chlorine, right. To, this will be Wexler Pool and Supply Company. This will be for an amount of $2.60 per gallon. Again, this is recommended by Recreation Superintendent Matt Arone. Is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, again, second. Trustee Cassell, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Thank you. Action item number five, consider a motion to approve an employment agreement with Police Chief Betsy Gilardi. This is a, obviously, a legal matter. We had some discussions in executive session, which we are allowed to do by law. And I think what I'll do here is ask for a motion to approve this employment agreement subject to approval, final approval by the village attorney. There were a couple of, trying to think when I, do you want to have a copy of that?
I do. Do you want it marked?
I have it, yes.
Here it is.
I have it.
Do you have it? Let me have his back.
So you'll have that one back? So again, this will be a motion to approve the employment agreement with Police Chief Betsy Gilardi, subject to final review and approval by the village, attorney for the village. And specifically, just to make sure that there's clarity, I think, on points 2.3, 2.6, 4.3, and 5.1. Those, there was just still a little bit of cleaning up that needed to be done there and just to, just to confirm that. And so that'll be part of the motion. Is there a motion? Trustee K., second. Trustee O'Donnell, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Action item number six is to consider a motion to retain the landscaping professional services of Moon's Associates for the Mercy College project. Marcus, just maybe for the benefit of the residents and the board, just a little background here?
Sure, no problem, Mayor. A couple weeks ago, we also approved a number of consultants for Rivertown Square to make sure the work they're done is compliant with what the approvals were. So this is the same kind of example. Mercy College, as we know, is an important project with the dorms. There's a lot of landscaping that's taking place. And Lucille Munz, from the Munz Associates, who worked on landscaping plan, who acted as agent to make sure the landscape, all the landscaping is done as approved. If there are any modifications, she'll be coming back to the village board to reflect what the modifications were and make sure the board is okay with any modifications. It can be anywhere from, may have to move a road a little bit and a tree might be taken down, maybe recommend a different tree to be replaced in there, to try to save trees whenever necessary. So as the work progresses, there might be changes in the landscaping plan and want to make sure that they abide not only by what's agreed to, but maybe enhance it if any modification is part of the project. So that's all we're trying to do here.
Okay, so this is formalizing a, an agreement with Lucille and her firm. Nothing's really being necessarily changed in the overall original plan, but there could be some changes, which would be recommended by Lucille and would be of benefit to the neighborhood. And obviously, we would want that to also be shared with the landing board as well, just to make sure that as many people as possible are on board with that. Correct. Is there an amount to this retainer fee?
Yes, the amount is to provide naturally $10,000.
Okay.
Based on an hourly rate.
And that cost is covered through?
Yeah, oh, so plain, the building permits fee will more than cover the cost for the Lucille Munz. That's part of the building permit fees, is to cover any additional consultants or staff time to review the work that's been done, that's part of the building permit.
This is a big, this is a big project, a big job. We want to make sure it gets done right. Lucille has, did make a lot of recommendations and was very much involved in terms of the original plan, the landscaping plan, very, very important, obviously, for the, for both Mercy College, but also for the neighborhood there as well.
Correct.
And just make sure it's all done properly and really looks well, proper screening, proper, you know, types of what, whatever's being planted there, so.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for Marcus on that? Then I'll take a motion to approve an employment agreement, sorry, this is six. Consider a motion to retain the landscaping professional services of Moon's Associates for the Mercy College project as outlined by the village administrator and as presented in the letter from Moon's Associates dated May 11th. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second. Trustee Golio, discussion?
I have a question.
Discussion.
So who monitors her hours for this? Does Mercy College monitor or us?
No, whenever there's any kind of meeting, she notifies myself. Once she needs to attend, I'm always invited to all the meetings. They provide her with any changes. So it really comes down to when any change has to take place and she'll monitor.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Who keeps track of her work?
I do.
Okay. Just checking.
No problem.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion? And that passes with seven eyes. Action item number seven. This is a consider a motion to retain the landscaping professional services of Moon's Association, Associates for village property located at High Street and for the funds to be expensed from the recreation fund. Just as a background here, this is related to the High Street enhancement project, which the Conservation Advisory Board has been very much involved with recently and has made a formal recommendation to the board in terms of what would be the, really, the first step in identifying a number of trees that should come down immediately, as well as making note and recommending that in addition to that, as we, you know, looking more to do this project in phases, that it's gonna, that what will be very important in the long run is to maybe look at adding ground cover and having somebody, the arborist identifies the bad trees, the good bad, the good and the bad. But that's not a landscaping function, and that's what Lucille would be providing here. So I believe that this is also being recommended by the Conservation Advisory Board to really make sure we're doing this properly. And you were advising it as well.
Yes.
And it does make a lot of sense. But any questions or problems or issues anyone has with this at all?
The amount is not to exceed $1,000.
Mayor, that was an important point to distinguish between the arborist function and what Lucille would be doing. You know, things like, you know, ways to prevent erosion, ground cover. So I know that was a question we had, I believe trustee K., right? We both had that same question. So thank you for clarifying that.
I think it's also important that she's very aware in terms of what's native and what is not native.
Correct.
And that any time that something's gonna go in, it's gonna be something native to our area as opposed to the things that have come in and are invasive now.
Yeah, she'll also be able to advise us on visual impacts and, you know, how to make it look good in addition to be functional and careful properly.
Great. Okay, then I'll, thanks very much for those comments and questions. Then I'll take a motion to retain the landscaping professional services of Moon's Associates for village property located at High Street. The funds will be expended from the recreation fund. This will be an amount not to exceed $1,000, as presented in the fee proposal from Moon's Associates dated May 23rd and is outlined by the village administrator. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Cassell, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. I'm gonna just make a slight change here to the agenda and just move action item number nine up into the eight spot now because it's related, so that we're not skipping around here too much. But action, item number nine, I'm gonna make action item number eight now. And this is to consider a motion to reject the bids for tree removal at the High Street property. It's related, it kind of segues in here better. Again, this is all sort of back to the enhancement idea is, we did go out some time ago, the village went out some time ago when we were sort of initially looking at this project to get bids from what essentially would have been a full, kind of clear-cut clearing of the entire property. And then starting from that point. And we got back a number of bids, which ranged anywhere from 70-some odd thousand to 100-plus. So the plan here and the thought process here is that, as we have to do formally in terms of the bid, municipal bid process, is that at some point, we have to reject these bids, get these bids off the table.
Correct.
We're done, we're rejecting them. And we, and the plan is for us then to go out and rebid the project in the phases that we're talking about, which is the selective removal of these trees that have been identified by the Conservation Advisory Board and working with Lucille and the arborist.
Correct.
And taking it in stages. Is that kind of what we're doing?
That's correct, yeah.
Does that make sense? Questions? Okay. So that's the, that's the item here. Then I'll consider a motion to reject the bids for tree removal at the High Street property as, as outlined in the intent that we'll move forward with the new bid process. Is there a motion? Trustee K., second. Trustee O'Donnell, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Okay, now we'll jump up to eight, which is now really action item number nine, is to consider a motion to authorize a change order to D&amp;M Electrical to supply temporary power to the train station during a change of service. This will be during construction of the waterfront project. This will be in the amount of $2,587.69, recommended by the village administrator. Marcus, for the benefit of the board and the residents, just can give us some background here.
During the construction, everybody's seen Con Edison, been working down there trying to upgrade the electrical service and during the construction, Con Edison cut off electricity to the train station by moving, by prematurely moving some electricity over to another switchbox. So we had to get the electricity up and running back again at the train station to do that. So D&amp;M came at the last, in the middle of the night to get that thing done to, you know, who are our tenants. It was not, not any for their own, the electricity was cut off by Con Edison. So we had D&amp;M go in there to temporarily switch back to get electricity up and running for the train station again. So this is what the change order was done for emergency call out.
Is Con Edison gonna reimburse us for that?
No, no, no. That was, that was, that was a, that was a test they were doing at the time. They did not inform me of it, and that's what happened. That's Con Edison.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then let's see what we do with this one. I'll take a motion to authorize the change order to D&amp;M Electrical as outlined by the village administrator and presented in their change order. This is to supply temporary power to the train station during construction of the waterfront project, and this will be in the amount of $2,587.69. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion. All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Okay, now, action item number, true action item number 10 is to consider a motion to authorize the hiring of ASAP Electricians, Inc., for professional services to complete modifications to electrical service at the train station building for an amount not to exceed $5,000, and that the expenditure will come out of the overall budget for the waterfront project. I feel like this is Groundhog Day. It's just, it's just change order after change order to this electrician and that electrician. It's just change order after change order to this electrician and that electrician. Again, Marcus, just for the benefit of the board, I know we've kind of been through this, just specifically, what is this related to?
Sure, no problem. It was the last change order we did, when we switched over the generator cutoff switch down to the train station. That modified the overall concept plan for the train station itself. What everybody has to understand is all electricity for the waterfront runs through that train station. If you go into the room where the electrical panels are, it's, I can't understand it. It's switches and boxes and things all over the place, and wires. So when the train station guys did their electrical service, assuming at that point, we didn't have the electrical switch over at that building, but they have to modify, we had to modify their switch box to get out of the way, to get the electrical cutoff switch in there. So that $5,000 is interrelated to us moving the electrical service out of the way to put our cutoff switch for the generator, in order to get everything working together in that one location, then to go back out to our waterfront. So we had to work together to get that coordinated. So that's what this change order is for. The good news is, is that removes, that takes care of all the electrical service for the waterfront. Con Edison is there working right now, they've been working for a couple weeks there, which I don't think was going to happen. So we got them going done, and we expect the waterfront electrical work to be completed by the end of this month. So we should be seeing the end of this at this point.
I have a question. How come we have ASAP Electricians, and then we had DME Electrical contracting?
Because the D&amp;M Electro was doing our work, the other company was doing the electrical work for the switch over. They did all the electrical work for the train station people, for the tenants. So they have to move everything out of the way for us to finish our job. So it's two different electricians. Because it's only one.
But it's our time.
Yes, yes. We had to make them move their stuff out of the way to finish our job, to get the generator switch.
But when the building was renovated, why wasn't this part of the renovation?
No, it was. But the problem is, the original generator, let's go back, the original work for the generator was going to go at the comfort station. By being a comfort station, that only won the comfort station. We wanted to run the whole parking lot, so we switched everything back to the train station. So that moved the entire concept.
It's all coming back to me now.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
I think the other part of the, the good news part of it is, this is a village-owned asset.
Absolutely.
This is part of an overall, obviously, a dramatic improvement of that building.
Everything way above code.
At the end of the day, this is part of what the improvement is about.
Yes.
Even though it's still difficult to sort of keep investing here, but we're getting near the end of this.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thanks for that, Marcus. Then I'll consider a motion to accept the payment of $5,000.
Did we finish that one?
Oh, wait. I didn't get there yet. On 10, yeah. Consider a motion to authorize the hiring of ASAP Electricians for the professional services, as outlined by the village administrator, to complete the modifications to the electrical service at the train station building. And this will be for an amount not to exceed $5,000, and outlined in ASAP, and as presented in ASAP Electric's estimate. Is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, second. Trustee Casell, discussion? All in favor? Passes with seven eyes. And the last action item, number 11, is consider a motion to accept a payment of $5,000 to cover all outstanding temporary certificate of occupancy as of May 26th. This is for the property located at 41 Temple Road.
This is something we discussed that was outstanding, I said numbers, temporary certificate of occupancy. The owner was not aware of that, so the village board decided to settle at $5,000. The money hasn't been cashed, it didn't bounce, so the money's in the bank. So if the board wants to accept this, we can release the C L. to the property owner.
Okay.
I was going to say, just, yeah, swap it over to ASAP and.
Easy come, easy go.
Okay. Then I'll take a motion to accept the payment of $5,000, and as outlined by the village administrator. This will be to cover all outstanding temporary C of O. or TCOs as of May 26th for the property located at 41 Temple Road. Trustee K., second. Trustee O'Donnell, discussion? All in favor? And that passes with seven eyes. Okay. Thanks very much, everybody. Just real quick, we'll get to the minutes here. I guess we did have a quorum the last time, but within that quorum, Jeff, I think you were absent from the meeting before.
I was here, but I wasn't.
So we couldn't vote on the May 28 minutes at that time. So let's just go quickly back to the future, actually, April 28, 2015. Anybody have any?
Page seven.
Okay.
Mayor Canet thanked.
Thanked everyone for their comments. Mayor Canet thanked.
Page seven?
Yeah. One, two, three, four, fifth line, fifth paragraph down.
Oh, Mayor Canet thanked everyone for their comments.
Mayor Canet thanked.
And just delete Mayor Canet thanked. Anything else? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to adopt the minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for April 28, 2015, as amended. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Rosillo, all in favor? And that passes with one, two, three, four, five, five eyes, right? Or six?
Six.
Six and one absent. Okay. So those minutes are adopted. And now for the minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for May 12, 2015.
I wasn't there, and I can't vote on it, but if you see on the first page, second paragraph, I couldn't open the public meeting, and I don't think Trustee Golio could have read this since we weren't here.
Yeah, that was a unique approach we used. Couple of hollow brands.
Okay. We'll just ask Liz to go back to the tape and just see who opened the public meeting, how that went.
She did a great job.
So that just needs to be checked. Anything else? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to adopt the minutes for May 12, 2015, as amended, just again, identifying the motion to open and the second to open the public meeting and adjourn the executive session. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second. Trustee Casell, all in favor? And that's six.
Four.
Four eyes. And three absent. Okay, great. Just a couple of reports here. First, a report of the parking workshop by Trustee Casell. Donna?
Yeah. On May 18th, the New York Municipal Transportation Council and the Westchester DOT graciously sponsored a parking management workshop for Dobbs Ferry. So I'd like to thank Larry McAuliffe of NIMTC, and, oh, Charlie Sutter from Westchester DOT for putting this together for us. Greg Del Rio did the presentation. He was with RBA Associates, which is an engineering and traffic management company. Essentially, we also had between 25 to 30 throughout the day residents, participants from the village. That included residents from the downtown, store owners, property owners, restaurateurs, people from various boards and committees that are very involved with what's going on downtown. We did invite John Salvi, thank you, went around to everybody in the downtown with flyers, and it was on the village website. So I want to thank all those people who did show up and participate. It was a terrific day. Initially, the idea of the workshop, it was a workshop. It was a brainstorming workshop. Nothing was decided, no actions were taken. It was the idea of getting interested community members together to brainstorm on how to improve the parking in the downtown, what the issues were, try to come up with some ideas. RBA will be doing a presentation to us, will be sending us a report on what they found, and some of the suggestions, long-term, short-term, and midterm ideas of what we might be able to do. Some of the, a lot of the issues seemed to be parking by employees in front of the stores, and that seemed to be the big, big, major issue, that they stay there all day and really restrict the parking in the downtown. Some of the suggestions, again, these are just suggestions, nothing will be done without a public hearing and without the board's approval, but some of the suggestions were to really enforce the two-hour parking, to increase parking fees in various areas of the village, depending on usage, looking at possibly valet parking with some of the I'm trying to think what else. But there were a number of suggestions, finding an area for employees to park in so that they wouldn't be parking on the street. Maybe find an area where they could go and park and leave the spaces free. So it was a very informative, there also was a walk, a tour. After there was a presentation, the first part of the workshop was a presentation by RBA on parking principles, parking management principles. Then there was a tour. We had two groups that walked through the village, identifying areas where there were problems, discussing solutions in those areas. We all then reconverged back here at Village Hall, and we had a roundtable discussion. There was a lot of really good participation, very intelligent, very enthusiastic group, and I'm looking forward to the report from RBA when that comes out sometime in June.
Great, Donna. Thanks for that update, and thanks for taking the lead on that. Great work, and got some good press in the paper, too, I think, in terms of, you know, the issue, which was great, and look forward to follow-up on that. Thank you, thank you very much. We were going to give a report on the parking permits for the waterfront, but we're going to table that, just because there's a little bit more data that we want to get, but we are monitoring that situation. And obviously, as we get closer to the reopening of the beautiful new park, you know, permits in general are going to be looked at very, very closely. So we're going to come back to that one probably the next time we meet. The other report was, we wanted to hear Marcus' report on the New York state audit of tax cap.
As we, as my concern's always been, that the state auditists will be checking our calculation for the tax cap, and that's why in the past, we've decided to adopt a public hearing and adopt the local law, which allows us to override the tax cap, just for caution purposes and to protect ourselves. Happy to report, they checked 2014 and 15, they were here for a couple hours, and my calculations was right on target. So we have no issues for those two years. So I'm just happy to report that, for some reason, on the entire state of New York, we were one of the people that had to check. And at least I'm happy to report that our numbers were exactly where it was reported. We have no issues, and I'm very proud to say that we comply with the tax cap. So that's one that I'd give you a quick report on that.
That's great news. Good, well done. Good job, and great job, too, Jeff, as well, treasurer, and really good news. You get picked out randomly, you never know, but it was good we passed the test.
It wasn't like the lottery.
Yeah, right, right. Any other reports from trustees at all? Trustee Flynn?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. On behalf of the Rec Committee, I want to make two announcements here, actually, three. So we're going to do Pool Day again, and it's on July 27th at Gould Park, and it's free admission for all residents. So the pool.
July 27th, July?
Or June?
June.
You know what Matt has here, July 27th? He sent me an email, but.
It's got to be June.
It's got to be June, right? Okay.
We'll double-check that, and we'll put it in the news letter for sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's in the email here, I have July 27th. But yeah, so June 27th sounds more like it. We'll get the exact date, Mayor.
It's Saturday.
June, okay, it's June 27th then.
July 27th is a Monday.
Yeah. Okay. So Pool Day, June 27th at Gould Park. Thanks, good catch there, guys, thank you. Free admission for all residents. The pool hours are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and they're going to have entertainment, music, Joe Rooney from 12 to 4:00, and Nonna's Deli will be doing a barbecue and serving food. A youth basketball league for kids entering grades three to six in the fall for both boys and girls. There are going to be evening games at Gould Park starting July 6th. And finally, there are still spots available for all summer camps, junior camp, senior camp, and teen travel camp. So for, if you're interested in any of these programs, basketball league, summer camp, call the Rec Department or visit the website. The number is 914-693-0024, or go on the website. And Marcus, I think he has most of it posted up there, right? Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I actually tried to download some forms today, and I was able to download the camp forms. So good job getting that website up and running, Liz. I know you were very big in that, too. So thank you very much, Liz, really, you did a lot there.
That's great. Yeah, I met with Mike Kaplan over the weekend, and we, the village should be rolling out its new version of the website very, very shortly. It should be a lot more user-friendly, the ability to download, it's going to look a little, a little more modern and more functional. And particularly, I think, I hope for the recreation part of it, too, which would be great. Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And let's see, any other reports? Jeff?
The Friends of the Dobbs Ferry Public Library, their annual meeting will be Friday, June 5th at 7:00 p.m. in the community room at the library. The word that I have is that the founder of Eat Local New York, Derek DiGuglielmo, who is a Dobbs Ferry, certainly alumni of the high school, I know. Eat Local New York is an online marketplace showcasing products that are made exclusively in New York. Samples of locally-produced goods and refreshments will be served starting at 6:45. So all are welcome, whether you're a friend or not, but it would be great if you would become a friend. And secondly, I'll just do a quick reminder from what Patty mentioned earlier, that Sunday, May 31st, the Sunday coming up, will be the conversation about buildings and land use. And we do often hear a lot about how our land should be used, and how buildings should be built, et cetera. So if this is of interest to you, please come and talk, and get your ideas and everything out, so it can become part of this whole project that is being done by the Dobbs Ferry Energy Task Force. And I'm just going to, we haven't done this for all five, but since this is the last one, I'll mention the co-sponsors were Cabrini of Westchester, Curious on Hudson, the Dobbs Ferry PTSA, Eat Local New York, Endless Trail Bike Works, the Garden Club of Dobbs Ferry, Groundwork Hudson Valley, the Master School, Mercy College, Roots and Wings, and St. Christopher's. And the Dobbs Ferry Energy Task Force thanks all of them for helping us be able to work on this climate action plan. So thank you, one and all. And come on the 31st, please.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Excellent. Benny?
I have a quick thing. The Youth Service Council is sponsoring a open mic for all middle school and high school students who are interested in performing. It could be comedy or music, and I believe it's June 3rd. So please, if you have a high school or a middle school student, and you're interested[1725.12]